I know, that's what Ashley said.
Well, he laid it out, it's even the Christmas. You can't make a decision from that. Just their fur and gear or clothes. The only thing I didn't feel was the cow froater up against my daughter telling me where to go. We still have some decisions.
It's all good, long as you recycle it.
That's right. At least there's a couple of them. Well, three of them.
Shane, what you predicting, what time?
Anyway.
How long you predicting?
Oh, it won't be a long.
Fifteen minutes.
Life is good, brother. I think.
All right, I'm gonna call our special meeting to order to talk about the budget. Craig, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, real quick, uh, want to review the calendar, so everybody's up to speed on that. Uh, this evening, we're looking for direction from council on matters concerning the fund balance. Uh, we can also certainly answer questions about supplements or CIP. However, council wants to handle those, those issues. Uh, May 2nd. Uh, next Thursday, uh, we'll have a presentation of the budgets for water resources, the electric department, schools, and I think Evergreen. We'll come in and talk, we'll talk about strategic partnerships then, uh, in more detail. And, uh, of course finalize any, any discussions we're not able to get through. This evening, since we have a hard break at seven, uh, actually seven ten, Michael.
Six fifty, we gotta have a hard break.
Seven ten, I mean, ten minutes before seven, yeah.
Yes.
That's what I meant.
Craig, you probably said.
He got to you too, so.
Craig, you may have said and I didn't hear, uh, May 2nd, what's the time?
Uh, we'll do, uh, we'll probably do five o'clock on May 2nd, so we can get through everybody's budget.
And I'll be absent on that day.
Okay.
Did I tell you too, in my flight.
Right.
Arrangements were to get here by seven.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if I would be able to get here by five or not.
Okay.
On how my flight comes in.
And if we need to set up individual meetings with anybody, we, we can certainly do that, too. Let's see, so, uh, after May 2nd, what we hope to do is to be able to, to put together our budget, start the, the building process on that, so that we can get a draft to you by May the 8th. Uh, and, uh, then, um, deliver final proposal by, uh, a final proposed budget by May 15th. Um, and we'll start making the necessary publications for council to do final deliberations and vote on adoption budget sometime in June. Get that wrong, Melissa, Erin, Amanda? Good. All right, so, uh, today, uh, real quick on review, we looked at pro formas. Um, what, uh, the, uh, discussion focused on last week was, uh, our expenses exceeding our revenues and our use of fund balance, and we discussed an alternative, which was, uh, an adjustment to our property tax rate. Uh, council requested, uh, um, to see some of the effects of various adjustments on the fund balance, and I think you have those. Also provided some information related to, uh, growth, uh, particularly considering revenues and expenses, uh, and the growth, um, on a per cap basis of, of those two, uh, numbers, and I think that was a little bit telling. Um, in the last 10 years, property taxes, uh, have increased thirty, uh, thirty percent, but on a per cap basis, expenses have only gone up three and a half percent. Uh, and that's in the context of last 10 years of CIP increases of about twenty percent. Um, municipal construction costs have gone up forty percent. Um, the total state and employee compensation has gone up sixty-six percent. That's a, that's a national number from the Department of Labor, that's not our number, that's a national number. Um, so, um, we are, of course, in a very competitive employment market. Uh, we're around two and a half percent unemployment right now, and so, because the city is a service provider and we need people to provide services, uh, that is our biggest expense, and it's, um, certainly one that we try and compete to get good people for, to provide level, uh, our services at a level that our citizens demand. Um, I think we're also becoming very good at managing our construction costs, uh, which is another large expense component that we have in our budget. Um, and, uh, we have some talent on, on staff now to, to be able to manage that as closely as possible. So, long story short, I don't believe that costs are really our budgeting issue. Of course, that doesn't mean that we won't be ever vigilant with costs and question costs every year that it comes in regardless of, of our revenue. I think, uh, that's a prudent thing to do, um, and a responsible thing to do with, uh, public money, and we will certainly commit and continue to do that. Um, but that's the expense side of the equation, the other side of our equation, of the equation we have to deal with is the revenue side. Uh, I would tell you, in the last 10 years, sales taxes have gone up sixty-four percent. Uh, property taxes have gone up twenty-eight percent, and that's a good strong showing, and it's related to growth, obviously, uh, but if we look at those on a per cap basis, it gets a little more telling. Um, if we look at it on a per cast basis, state taxes have gone up twenty-eight percent. That's sales tax, rather, that's good. Uh, but property taxes have actually gone down eight percent on a per cap basis. Um, so total general fund revenues on a per cap basis have actually decreased four percent in the last 10 years. In the last, uh, 20 years, we've had five rate decreases in our property tax. The rate now is about, well, it's a little bit more than fifty percent less than it was in, in, um, nineteen ninety-nine. Um, it significantly blow cities of comparable sizes in Tennessee, especially if you consider that we are supporting a school district, which would, um, in the support that we provide financially, take up about thirty percent of our tax rate. Uh, so if you factor those in, we are extremely competitive in our tax rate, um, relative to other cities, even with, uh, some of the numbers that we talked about last week. Um, we would still remain extremely competitive, particularly as we get closer and closer to some of the larger cities, Chattanooga, Knoxville, whose rates are substantially higher even than what we've been talking about. Um, council's, uh, uh, obviously has recognized the need to make adjustments to our fund balance and requested, uh, last year, um, when the city went through a round of, uh, cuts on expenses that, um, um, was difficult to do and difficult to maintain services through, but nonetheless, we did. Uh, I think council, uh, requested that the fund bal, I don't think council actually requested the fund balance be, or use of fund balance be, uh, eliminated, uh, in the next couple of years after that, so by FY twenty-one. Um, so, in, in short, or in summary, rather, we've looked at, uh, expenses, we've looked at revenues very closely. Um, I, I think we will continue, I know we will continue to address expenses as we go through each and every budget year and during the year. Uh, we've also looked very closely at the revenue side. Uh, we've implemented fees for services, particularly, uh, those services which are utility services, including, uh, the collection of solid waste. Uh, and we'll, uh, continue to implement those and bring back suggestions to council on how to do that. Um, we're studying development impact fees as we speak, that'll be, when we talked last week, that'll take some time to both get through the study and then to implement, so we're probably looking at a couple of years, couple of budget cycles for that. Um, so clearly, we, when we, when we took a, a real hard look at this, we recognized that we did have a structural issue, it's a structural issue on our revenue side, and it does relate, and I think the per cap numbers can bear this out, relates to our, uh, property tax revenues and our property tax rate. Um, so if we were to achieve our goal of, uh, getting out of the, uh, general fund, then our, uh, in, in the next couple of years and staying out of it over a longer period of time, based on our pro formas, uh, we made a recommendation to council, and as I said, I provided some numbers and some charting of, of, uh, uh, rates. So with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions, we have our department, uh, heads here. If you have any questions that are particular to a specific department, or if you'd like to focus and refocus on the fund balance, uh, again, we're looking for direction on that, so we can, um, put, uh, Melissa, Melan, Amanda to the hard task, and Erin to the hard task of really putting together the budget.
Could you, um, I, I really appreciate the information that you sent out to us, but could you speak a, again, to that downward property tax rate, uh, and what causes that, uh, the effective tax, property tax rate, and what causes that imbalance on how the direction's flowing and why we've ended up in this trending?
Right. Well, in, in Tennessee, we go through a process every four years of reassessing property, and when we do a reassessment, what cities are required to do is what's called equalization. We take the rate and adjust the rate so that, um, the taxes that are collected are on an equal basis. We've done that over the last 20 years, five times, because you do it every four years. Um, because we're a growing city and people are, are moving here, and we're having more and more property come on, online, that's forced us to decrease our rate every, every year for the last 20 years, or every four years for the last 20 years, so we're, we're now at, at a half of where we were at. Um, so our property tax revenues have grown, because we have more businesses, more houses that come on, and so the, there's an increase in the amount of assessed value on the property. But with our tax weight, rate dropping, if we measure that at, on a per capita basis, given the increase in our population, then the actual revenues per cap have dropped by eight percent. So, for every person that comes in since, uh, well, in the last, it's the last 10 years, since 2009 is when we used our measures, because that was the numbers that we could get our hands on that were consistent across the time. Uh, the, um, per, on a per person basis, people are paying eight percent less than they were, um, on a, um, or, or the tax, the tax revenues on a per cap basis have actually dropped eight percent over that period of time. And as I said, total, and then what the effect of that is, the total general fund revenues have dropped four percent, so actually, general fund revenues have decreased at the same, same pace. And so, more and more people that come on, unless we had a huge influx of major commercial development or something like that would allow us to catch up, and I, I haven't done those numbers, but I would imagine they would be extremely large. Um, you know, we won't, we won't kept, catch up with our, our current rate.
And I thought the additional information that, you know, how, what sales tax is basically based on, I mean, it, the economy shifts any direction, uh, if it goes down, slows down, then it's not sustainable as property tax, and.
It's, it's certainly not as stable, um, because sales taxes are collected constantly. You know, every time you buy something, you're collecting sales tax, so, we don't receive them for a couple of months, you know, they're, they're paid, not, but they're collected constantly over a period of time, so, sales tax revenues directly correlate to a downturn in the economy, and they do it very quickly. Uh, when people stop buying, they stop paying taxes, and then the, the revenue just ends. Property taxes are different, property taxes are, are set, they're set for a year, you collect them at the end of the year. Um, you know, you can see what's happening to the economy in short of some catastrophic event, like our last recession where we had a, a bubble in housing prices. Generally, housing prices don't, uh, drop, they may level out, they may not increase as much as they have in the past, but in history, um, throughout long history, from an economic basis, housing prices have always tended to, to increase, and so, uh, the anomaly was a few years ago in 2007, where we did see in some areas, a big drop. Um, and having lived through that, that was wonderful, but we never want to see that again, let's hope. So mostly, it's, uh, a lot more stable than, um, than certainly sales taxes, and when you look at things like long-term debt, which aren't, isn't going to change over the term of your debt, you do want to have a stable revenue stream that supports that. Um, and we consider something, an operation such as schools, which is consistently, um, requiring a certain amount of revenue, uh, to, to maintain their expenses, that's why school systems are generally supported on, on property taxes.
I've been through a lot of budgets, and I don't know that it, it's, either the light came on, and I all of a sudden ate a smart pill or something, but all of a sudden, the, how the puzzle fits together, given the way you presented this, uh, the implications of the yin and the yang of our decisions, uh, what's going to happen, uh, it's about as clear an explanation that I've ever seen, and it, it's a great primer class for, for, uh, city councilmen to kind of understand, because I don't care what kind of background you have, uh, city finances are unique, uh, and how that functions, because there's limited number of streams of revenue.
Mm-hmm.
And you just can't do more and expect to make more money. You've got to, you've got certain streams that you have to understand how that flows, and, uh, I, I appreciate the way you've laid.
Uh, just to piggyback on what you're talking about, the other side of it is, of course, the expense equation, and, and we are in the market on certain things, and we talked about employment. The other things you have to realize for municipal government is that we have mandates from the state. So we have certain expenses that we have to take on, certain services we have to provide, we don't have a choice, and some of those are federal mandates, so, we do have expenses that come to us no matter what. Um, so, we only have certain programs that we can adjust if we need to adjust on, uh, and those are substantial. But, when you talk about, you know, a couple of those, police and fire service, those are not ones you want to, you know, you want to contract, uh, particularly in a growing community, so that leaves even less that you can, can really deal with. So, and others always talk about expenses on the side of government, and we want to have less expenses, and we, you know, we, as I said, over time, we're a very lean organization, we've run lean in, in periods of very big increases, we haven't seen a substantial amount of increases in our expenses, particularly on a per cap or per employee basis, we've, we've kept that very close, but we do have to recognize that there are expenses that we're going to incur, and there's increasing costs that we don't have, and costs that we don't have, um, any control over. Um, the price of construction is going to go up, and in middle Tennessee, the, the enormous amount it has because of the demand. So, if we're to stay in that market and continue to provide, um, for a community that, all the, the demands that they want make it a great place to live, we will incur those expenses, and so, um, there's not much we can do on the expense side right now, I don't believe. It's really a revenue side that we, we need to take a look at.
I think, I, I'm in, you know, going through this, I'm enlightened, I think is a good, is a good part to say from going through sixteen of these budgets, but I'm more frustrated because it's not been presented this way before. You know, um, we, we would see graphs that shows, here's what you're expected to come in, sales tax, here's what you're expected to come in for property tax, but until, you know, it's easy to look at the last 10 years on what's happened on expenses. Now, part of the budget, when you look at a hundred and eighty million dollar budget, and you look at the pass-through money that comes through for like Greenway construction, you know, we're finishing up the Greenway, that hundred and eighty million that we've got is not true general fund dollars that we're spending, there's a ton of pass-through money that's in there from the federal government, from the state government, that we have to run through our, you know, run through our budget, but, you know, I asked Melissa to bring up, um, I asked her to pull up homes over the last 10 years, and then, and then I had her pull up, and I, we sent this out to the council, and this is public record, we weren't trying to pick on any one group, but the Target building, which I, I remember lots of people who, me included, were happy when, you know, Target got here, and going back 10 years, that building, their, their building was appraised, or property value was at six point seven million, and they were paying thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and three dollars in taxes, in property taxes. In 2018, that same building is worth nine point one million, and they're paying thirty-four thousand dollars in property taxes. So they're paying roughly four thousand less than what they did 10 years ago, and the part I'm, uh, you know, to some extent frustrated about, I, I, I get that when the val, you know, the valuation went up forty percent, but we're still providing the same service, that we've got to have some kind of, of metric that tells us that, you know, lowering that tax rate down twenty-one percent last year, in, in the same building that, over the last 10 years, we've collected anywhere between forty thousand to thirty-seven thousand, we decreased that in the year 2018 by six thousand dollars on, on a nine million dollar building, and we're wondering why we don't have the revenue right now, or why we're short on property tax revenue. So the theory that just because we bring on a bunch of commercial property, or we bring on a lot of population, that that helps supplement the property tax budget, it does to an extent, but, uh, we're going to have to, I think, that council, two or three years from now, really going to have to have a metric in place when that appraisal comes out, that, you know, I think if we had all sat up here last year and said lowering our, lowering the effective tax rate down twenty-one percent was going to cause where we are right now, that's an issue. Um, because our, if our revenue's decreasing, our expenses are still going up, that three and a half percent still going up for employee raises.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so those are the things that, you know, I, I definitely can see, our per capita spending is the same where it was 10 years ago. Um, now, yeah, the budget has gone up, it, uh, you know, we, we brought on two schools, seventy, seventy police officers.
Right.
Uh, thirty-five firefighters, to be able to stay within our ratios, but that's all dictated that we have to have, you know, for every twelve hundred residents, we've got to have a police officer. For every three and a half miles, we've got to have a fire station, so, you know, um, I think one of the things that an ISO rating of two, that if we start getting in an ISO rating of four and a five, then we're going to have homeowners saying, why is my house, my home insurance going up?
Right.
So there's, it's, it's, it's a give and a take, um, but this, the way that you've presenting it is, is, I'm happy, but it makes me frustrated that we've not ever had it been presented to us this way.
I think, looking at it as we have and seeing how it fits together, it's, we're going to be able to make some decisions that are more sustainable, basically, uh, because, uh, the trajectory that we're on right now is not going to be sustainable, uh, because all it takes is something, sales tax to go down, or, as it is right now, we, we don't have property to sell, uh, to create that gap, or, we spend fund balance. I mean, those are basically, you got three, three ways, and they're all teetering, those are all teetering, uh, uh, revenue streams that can, that can quickly shift. Uh, so, you know, I, I think, I, I hope the public will pay attention and listen to all the information that's being presented in this budget cycle, because there's a lot of good information for you to understand how we provide the services, how we're able to provide the services we are financially, uh, and to do that in a sustainable manner, and that, that is what we're trying to, the decisions we're trying to make now, is something, to introduce something that's more sustainable, a process that's more sustainable than, than what we have been on, the trajectory that we've been on in the past.
And I guess if you look at a house that was a hundred thousand dollar house in nineteen ninety-eight, and you look at the payment that you were making when you were paying at a dollar ninety per, per hundred, if you bought a two hundred thousand dollar house today with inflation, which that house may be a two hundred thousand dollar house today, but you're paying ninety-five cents per hundred today, and it has stayed the same, it has not kept up with inflation i- in any way, I mean, it, and, of course, we said we, we've been revenue neutral, well, is revenue neutral if there were no inflation? But we never compensated for inflation, and what, what has caused the, the effect of that is this snowball of revenue and, and expenses closing, and of course, with, you know, with, with really six or seven good years of economy behind us, it helped, uh, camouflage the situation. It also, uh, with the, um, um, the population growth, you saw more revenue coming in as sales tax, but, uh, as a general rule, what we're experiencing is now, is we're seeing more and more people shopping online, and those sales taxes are not increasing at the rates they did in the past. And so, so we've just, we don't have the revenue coming in, and, you know, what costs today what it did 20 years ago? I mean, there's just, it's, it's, it's challenging to try and provide services. Uh, uh, clearly, everybody wants to have good schools for their children, but we have to pay for those. And we've experienced, just in the last three years, a twenty-eight million dollar school turning into a thirty-five million dollar school with the same plans. So, so, it's, 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 it's more than evident that cost of everything that we're doing here has increased, and, and of course, we've given our employees raises, which they well deserved over those years.
Mm-hmm.
Everything has gone up in price except for tax revenue for the, for the city. And, and not only did it, it, it didn't keep up in the sense that it simply was adjusted to a lower amount than what we had operated on before. And, uh, you know, I, I think this presentation that we've put together, and, and clearly Craig and the staff deserve a hundred percent of the credit for it, I mean, has enlightened, I think, every council member up here as to the clarity of the situation that we're in. Now, you know, um, somebody other days told me, hey, you're talking about raising my taxes. I said, I'm talking about raising our taxes, because we as council members do not want to raise our taxes, because we pay taxes just like everybody else does. But at the same time, we know that there's an operating expense and a, and a request for services that people want. Generally, first person I encounter always says, what are you going to do about this traffic problem we've got in Murfreesboro? The only solution to the traffic problem is to improve our road system, and the only way to improve our road system is to spend more money on roads. Now, if the money were being collected to waste it, I would never support a tax increase. But, there's some demands that are being placed on us that we have to fulfill, and our city has been run lean, you know, there's, there's always those who say, well, I don't use that park, or I don't use that facility, so I'm paying for something I'm not using. Well, that's true, but that's part of the quality of life that helps attract businesses to Murfreesboro. And, when, when your children decide they want to get a job, you'll be glad those companies came to Murfreesboro because of the quality of life that we live. And so I, I think that, you know, that the question's not when, but the question that we're dealing with right now is how much.
Craig, looking at this, I want to make sure I'm, I'm looking at it correct, but, our total general fund expenses budgeted for 2018 are a hundred and forty-eight million, is that, is that right?
Uh.
Or is that per capita? I'm looking at your, the chart here, it's just got one forty-eight, one seventy-four, and a comma, so it looks like part of it's cut off.
I'm not sure which chart you're looking.
It's, uh, page, page two. I want to make sure I'm looking at that, you know, I know our overall budget's a hundred and seventy-nine million.
That was, that would have been, that, that, what you, the memo you got ran through 2018.
Okay.
So, that would have been 2018's.
Right, last year.
Last year.
Right.
That's correct.
Correct.
A hundred and forty-eight, including debt service.
And, and I do think that, just having glanced at Facebook this past week, which is something I try not to do anymore at all, but, 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 but I've got a good friend, Jeff Rainwater, I'll, I'll call him out. He, he's, he's posted a list that says Smyrna and Laverne, and he's got Franklin and, and several cities that surround us that have tax rates lower than us, and Craig, you've already addressed this, but I want to drive it home, those cities are not providing the services that we are based on our general fund. They, they have school assessments, they have, uh.
Or no schools.
Or, or no schools.
No school.
They have no, basically no park system that we provide, they have, uh.
Solid waste collection.
No solid waste.
No trash pickup, and, and, and so, so the, the, the quality of life and the number of services that we provide, I'm completely willing, if, if the public were to step forward and say, we don't want these services anymore, we'll handle this ourself. If they come to me and tell me that, I'll be glad to support their idea of trying to cut those services. But the reality is, is every one of them have said, no, I want these services, I just don't want to pay more taxes, and that's unrealistic, so, that's where we're at.
That's really where, um, I, I've tried over this past week, you know, because yesterday I was at a, at a place and, you know, had jokingly, um, they, a guy came up to me and said, hey, you're just raising taxes to be able to, uh, get more on your salary, and I'm like, yeah, the nine hundred dollars a month that I get, that's exactly why we're, we're doing that.
Told you we should have done that last year.
Yeah, yeah, so, the, the, um, the, the misconception, I think, that, that we're all trying to, you know, trying to work through, is trying to figure out, you know, where that, you know, what, what's, what's there to cut? Sixty percent of what we're, what we're borrowing for is all transportation projects. You know, point one percent is golf, uh, on a hundred and eighty million dollar budget. So, I mean, what's there to cut? We take police, fire, which is the majority of the budget, you've got road projects, and what, what, so what's the idea to cut? I mean, tell me, you know, we, we've said for years, and I think this is the, the thing that, and I get it, I, I, the biggest concern I've got right now is if the city of Murfreesboro raises taxes, if the county raises taxes, if we've enacted a trash fee, I mean, when's enough, enough? That's, that's what I'm worried about, so, and I think that's something the council, we're going to have to talk about, that if we, as we go further in these discussions, if, if you've got the county already saying that there's the high possibility that that tax, tax rate's going to go up, and then we're talking at between a twenty-five, thirty-five, forty-five percent, but we've enacted a five dollar trash fee, um, you know. dollar trash fee, um, you know, where's that balance? So, I, I, I think that's gonna be really the discussion that we're gonna have to have, but, you know, you can't cut fire, can't cut police, we're mandated on what we have to be able to provide those services for. Uh, you know, I hear a lot that the police headquarters went over twenty-three million dollars, and that's not the truth. It's, it's good to report and sensationalize that, because that, you know, obviously gets clicks, but, you know, we, we looked at the funding structure back in two thousand eight and said that we wanted to borrow thirty million dollars, but by the time we actually built the facility in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, we said that we, that the budget was gonna be forty-seven million dollars. Then we added three million dollars of telecommunication and fiber for the entire city to be able to go to that facility, so we ended up three million dollars over budget. But a lot of that had to do with fire, with the firing stations and all the things we put. But my, my point is, even if that's the case, even if you said it was twenty million dollars over budget, that's two million dollars over for debt service for the year. Where's the other fourteen million? I mean, what, so what are we gonna cut? And, and that's the discussion, I think, you know, your, your option is either to raise some of the revenue or cut. And I, I don't know what there, I mean, after looking through this budget, I mean, I, I don't know what there is to cut, besides police, fire, schools, road projects. And, and I can tell you that the average person in Murfreesboro, if you said, well, you pay a little more to be able to get back and forth quicker through Murfreesboro, the majority of people I talk to will say, absolutely, yes, I want to be able, I mean, you look at the budget from two thousand nine to two thousand eighteen, we built a nine-mile road around the west side of Murfreesboro. That's in that budget. I mean, building Veterans Parkway. So, there's a lot of stuff that, when you really nail it down, that it, it's hard to be able to find ways to, to take that out. So, I think as a council, what we've really got to discuss is taking into factor what the county may do, our trash fee, um, in which this trash fee's not gonna be sustainable. I mean, we're, we're paying six percent in our trash fee right now, as a, as a overall budget, and our, our total that we're being projected to spend by the year, uh, five years from now, is twenty-seven percent of our total budget. So, I mean, that, the council here, five years from now, is gonna have to talk about where that money's coming from. It's just a, it's almost like a perfect storm.
There, the, the one thing that came out of the report that Craig gave us, uh, you know, w- w- you know, we, we can dissect, I guess everybody can look at their own budget and say, there's something in here, there's some fat in here somewhere, I just don't know where it is, but, but I think that what was the revelation to me was that over ten years, our expenses increased three and a half percent. Is that...
On a per cap basis.
On a per cap basis. So, you know, to, to hang our hat on somewhere, I mean, I think we've, we, we probably have made, you know, like I told somebody this week, government doesn't do everything wrong, and doesn't, doesn't do everything right either. But, but we've tried to be, uh, uh, good stewards of the money, uh, that we have asked our citizens to pay for the services that we provide. And if you look, I think so, to some degree, the reason people are coming here is we've done a fa- a pretty effective job of providing quality service, uh, to our citizens. So, expenses are, are really not going to get us to where we really need to be in a sustainable model. So, uh, you know, I think that's, while we all need to be, you know, I think it's been said by the city manager, we're gonna be diligent, we're gonna continue to be good managers, and ask our department heads and supervisors to, you know, be very frugal, and, and, uh, good stewards of, of the money that they've been, they're given, but, but they've got a ten-year record of doing that already. So, I think that's gonna be a given. But, uh, what, what we've got to address is, is the process that doesn't give us a sustaining income stream to be able to do what we are expected and the citizens have grown to expect. And quite honestly, if you look at some other communities, I had an opportunity to look at some other communities, even our size communities. Of course, different sized communities provide a whole different range of services, but even services, you know, uh, communities our size, uh, we probably need to maybe look at, at some, uh, how efficient they are, because I think government's not necessarily, uh, as efficient everywhere that you look at it. But Murfreesboro does a pretty good job of providing service in an efficient and a, a reasonable manner. So, uh, like I say, I, 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 I think we have, uh, we have a pretty good model before us to, to make a decision. Uh, I, what, what are we, what are we looking for today, or...
I, I want to make, because I know Rick has got some stuff that, the, one thing I, I, I do want to say, and, and I'll shut up, I, I do think we've made mistakes. Um, I mean, you know, I wasn't here when Medical Center Parkway was bit, or built, I'm not gonna argue anything against Medical Center Parkway, because that's over ten percent of our total property tax base and, and over fifteen percent of our sales tax base. So, I remember when we did vote to spend seven hundred thousand dollars on landscaping for Medical Center Parkway, and I just shook my head, because, you know, that thing brings in seventeen million dollars, just, we paid for the landscaping a hundred times over. But, you know, in hindsight, would it have been nice not to have the landscaping and have a center turn lane down Medical Center Parkway? I think it probably would have. But as we start going through and, and, and looking at what's happening out there density-wise, I, I do think as part of this budget that we are, we, we have to have the conversation, you know, we put a moratorium on apartments back a year ago, and I think the discussion's gonna have to come about on what we're gonna do moving forward on apartments. Um, I think there's an argument to where density is great in some areas like the avenue, where people can walk to all the, the, uh, walk to all the restaurants and shopping, and that way they're not having to drive their cars there, but putting, you know, as many apartments that are around the Blackman area that they have to drive everywhere that they go. I mean, that's part of the transportation issues we, we're having. So, that's gotta be a discussion on appropriate places where, um, multifamily is gonna go. And, and I, I would be the first to say, I think we have enough multifamily. Now, the same people that are arguing against multifamily are the same people who are saying, we should let the market drive what's, what's out there. I mean, if that were the case, I would love to have stopped check cashing places and mattress stores, you know, five years ago. But we're gonna have to have those discussions, and they're gonna be unpopular discussions when we talk about saying, we're gonna put a moratorium on apartments. But we're already looking at impact fees, we're looking at, at, we're gonna have to look at the density that we're, we're putting around the community, but, you know, does it make sense to have a trash fee, a property tax increase, a county property tax increase, and then throw a large, uh, impact fee on at the same time? And then we're gonna be sitting here a year from now, or two years from now, like Chatham County was twelve years ago, when they enacted an eight thousand dollar impact fee, and we're gonna be wondering, what, why are our building permits down fifty percent? And then we're really gonna have an issue. So, we really have got to put some kind of economic model together to address all of it. Rick?
I'm trying to make this fairly quick, um, but, uh, it's probably, most of this has already been said, I'll just maybe add a couple of things to it, but I, I'd kinda made some notes on, you know, where I sit on this stuff, and, and really, you know, there's some, there's some, uh, you know, what I would call more demographic issues at stake as to why, you know, and you got, we're already starting to mention these, as to why these, uh, you know, our revenues are going one way, our expenses are going the other, and sort of why we are where we are. And it's easy, I think it's easy for people to kinda look at something, and frankly, five years ago, I probably would have looked at some of these things and said the same thing. You know, I would have thought it was because, ah, well, we spent too much on this, or we shouldn't have done this, or should have done that. You know, look, I still have some ideas that are, we shouldn't do that, that are in this budget right now. So, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm still, I still think that way to a certain degree, but the, the, the issues of why we are sitting here today, talking about this, are much larger than that. I mean, this equalization impact, I found it, really, it's been pretty fascinating to me. I mean, this is, e- even though this is no fun to have to talk about and, and make a decision on, it's been extremely fascinating for me to, to, to come to a better understanding of how all this works, and the fact that the, the Target store, and, you know, I've looked at numerous properties over this last couple of weeks to try to get an idea, and, you know, I, I suspect that if you called Rob Mitchell's office, and, and you asked how many people pay less in taxes today than they did five years ago on their same property, the number is pretty, pretty big. I mean, really big. Um, which baffles me, because I never would have thought that, you know, I mean, just, ju- I just never would have even thought that that was possible. But, so equalization is a big one, you know, something I don't think we've really brought up, but I think is, is something that we gotta get out on the table, and we gotta deal with. But, uh, the lack of success that we've had in recruiting higher-paying jobs is absolutely a big problem. And, you know, we've all talked about this for years and years and years, but, you know, what I wanna, I mean, what I want to get out there for folks to understand is that, you know, there's a couple of ways to, to get more taxes. You know, if somebody comes here, a- and, and look, it's, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm talking about the, the math here.
Right.
Somebody comes here and buys a one hundred thousand dollar property, they're gonna pay less in taxes than if they come here and buy a seven hundred thousand dollar property. It's just math. So, if everybody that would have moved here was buying much more expensive property for the last ten years, we'd have more taxes, we'd have more revenues with the same amount of people that we got today. But the problem is, our per capita number, our average is going down. Okay? Equalization doesn't help that, but it's not just equalization, it's who's moving here. And it's the types of jobs that we've generated in this town for a long time now. And, you know, we gotta get that on the table, and we gotta deal with that, and we gotta get right about it and figure it out. To, to me, I think that, I mean, you know, does that drive density, and does that drive more multifamily? Probably so. I, it's hard to buy a house on a ten or twelve dollar an hour job, right? Um, so, I mean, that, to me, is a root issue. Uh, you mentioned the density, I mean, employee costs, I, I, I looked at this, and I, I, I'm sorry, I had to walk out to get my computer, but, uh, if somebody already mentioned this, I apologize, but, um, I asked a question, and I think Melissa was the one who answered it, to try to understand the comparison of the number of employees that we had twenty years ago versus our population. And honestly, I was a little cynical about it when I asked. I, I kinda thought I wa- I kinda thought I knew which way it would be, but I knew I didn't know, so I just asked. And actually, it's pretty dang awesome. I mean, you know, with the, the group, or the people, or people, I mean, look, frankly, I, I kinda thought that I knew what the answer might be, but I was wrong. Our population since nineteen ninety-nine has gone up over a hundred percent. Okay? And, you know, if you're sitting there thinking, well, golly, we've added all these new programs, and this government programs, and we keep, you know, finding ways to spend money and all that kinda stuff, you know, it takes employees to run programs, right? In the same time that our population has increased by over a hundred percent, our employee base has only gone up between fifty and sixty percent, whether, it depends on how, if you wanna look at it part-time or full-time. So, our employee base only up fifty percent, so we're not like, we hadn't gone crazy, we're not, you know, there's not a bunch of fat running around, you know, just people standing around watching their people work, or not work, or whatever. I mean, I, I honestly thought the number would be closer, they would be closer to the same. But the fact that we've been able to serve twice as many people with only a fifty percent increase in employees is pretty damn awesome. I mean, that's cool. Um, that's not a bad thing. And so, I don't feel nearly as bad about, you know, is there, is there a bunch of fat out there, you know? Um, so, you know, look, there's all these big demographic things that I think are just bigger than anything that any of us can necessarily control, you know, we can't flip a switch and change any of that stuff just immediately. You know, once you get past that stuff, then there's the quality of life items, you know, the parks, stuff like that. And maybe there's some argument on that, right? Some people may think that this is not enough, or some people think it's too much. What, I, you know, look, that's fine, we all gotta just to kinda agree that we may have some differences on that. I'm, I'm not talking about council members, I'm talking about all the citizens. Um, but that's just sort of, you know, look, we gotta make the best decision we can on that. So, here's the hard part. How do we, how do we start to, to put some change into effect in some of these areas that are things that maybe we can change? You know, I'm, I'm gonna list these things out. I actually had on my list, uh, to address the density issue, um, one way or another. I'm, I'm open to ideas. I think, you know, Shane alluding to that idea is certainly one of them, whatever, I, I don't know the exact answer to that, but we gotta address it. Um, you know, I think we need to look at some sort of a matrix for how we fund our economic development partners, you know, and we need to tie that to the quality of jobs that come into this town. It can't be the same as it's been for the last ten or twenty years, and expect anything to be different. That's hard, that's a hard discussion, you know? I mean, a lot of good people who do work hard every day, but we gotta, I mean, we gotta put our resources where it's gonna change this demographic for us going forward somehow. Um, I think we gotta consider what the future of our school expansion looks like. You know, what happens when the next school rolls around here two or three years, and it's forty-five million dollars? Um, seems to me like we're having to devote so much time to trying to grow a system. Maybe we need some time to make sure we take care of what we got, and maybe let the county take care of the growth on that. Um, impact fees was on my list, and, uh, also potentially, I think Mr. Martin had brought this up recently, I don't know if you said it earlier tonight while I was out, but, um, you know, to, to capture those. This, this is something for me, just as a, as a bigger picture on what we're looking at when we start talking about a rate that I want to pass on to you guys. I initially was not, uh, not necessarily a fan of increasing the, the trash recapture number sooner. I just kinda thought, man, we just did it, let's try to at least get a year in with not messing with it, because it just, you know, because it just started half a year. Um, but in lieu of a higher tax rate number, I think that I would rather separate that out. I mean, in one way, you know, we're talking about cutting services, you know, and what are we gonna cut? I mean, look, by getting full recapture on trash, we're cutting a service, which is, uh, okay by me. Now, twelve or fourteen bucks a month per can, I, I think it's pretty fair. I mean, I would definitely pay it, and, you know, look, I'm definitely in, I'm okay for people to opt out. You think you can go get it done cheaper? I'm okay with opting out, even though it may be hard to manage and all that kinda stuff, but here's the deal, you ain't gonna be able to get it done cheaper.
Right. I, 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 I'm gonna opt out, and I want you to opt in, and then I'm putting all my trash in your can.
Yeah, we'll see how that works. But, look, I mean, at fourteen bucks a, a, a month, I'm, I'm just telling you, I'm, if, I, I, that's the way I would view it. So, I'd rather, you know, that's another four million bucks or so if we got the full capture on that, which would be, as we discussed last time, about a ten cent difference. That seven dollars a, a, a month difference, I think, makes up for about a ten cent difference in the tax rate increase. And so that just kinda goes to part of the reason why we're doing this in the first place, which is to separate out who's actually paying the tax for the service that they get, where, you know, the, the, the commercial folks who don't use that service and are paying a higher tax rate aren't getting deemed, you know, and we're, we're not necessarily hitting the tax rate quite as hard as why I'm, why I'm kinda leaning back the other way now.
Because we talked about this, when that property tax rate goes up, and, you know, the people who I lease to, or who I lease, who I'm leasing from, or I'm, if I'm a tenant, that's all going to your CAM charge. And so your CAM charge is gonna be more on a monthly basis, your CAM charge is gonna be more on, at the end of the year, which means that you're gonna charge more for your goods and services, because your, your rent's going up. I mean, it's, like you said, it's math.
Yep.
That's it. That's my comments.
I agree with really everything that's been said, and a couple of things have been said, I was gonna say it, but I won't repeat them. But, um, the bottom line is, we have some really, really tough decisions to make, and, you know, we just have to tackle them. The thing is, which one are we gonna talk about tackling first? Because we have to tackle these things, there's no doubt. And it's gonna hurt, but we are a vibrant city, and we have to, it's business. So, I guess the question is, where do we start?
Well, how, how do you want us to, to start, Craig? Do you want to talk about, I mean, you gave us four different options, do we wanna, do we wanna talk about those options, and then at the same time, talk about, you know, where we are on our solid waste fee, or...
Well, you know, we have a model that allows us to have some flexibility in the numbers that were put in, um, so we can, we can kinda use that to, to lead the discussion. But I get, you know, the decision points are, uh, what rate adjustment we would make, um, what, what the fee on solid waste pickup would be, what a fee on commercial solid waste, because what we've proposed is to, uh, change commercial solid waste, given the different way that it's... what the fee on solid waste pickup would be, what a fee on commercial solid waste, because what we've proposed is to change commercial solid waste, given the different way that it's picked up and the different type of trash that we are picking up on that. Those, those are probably the biggest things that would drive on the revenue side. Of course, then we have the supplements, supplement to the budgets and and the tiers on those, and if council wanted to discuss those, some of that might be taken up if we make the adjustments we want on a rate and solid waste fees, so we don't have to get too far into that discussion. So those are probably the three largest things to talk about right now is the rate, solid waste, including commercial, we're gonna do a a higher commercial rate, and the supplements, budget supplements.
Let me ask you guys a question, so this is, uh, 'cause I'm I'm not gonna get too deep into this if it's sort of, if I'm one out of seven here, but I mean, there was, there was a few things in the budget that I had, that I had thought that I would be okay with not having in there. I'm not gonna start going down that list unless, I mean, unless you guys kinda, I mean, I guess, I hate, I don't know how to, what to say, other than if you
What are some of the things?
Had some of the same, I mean, had some of the same thoughts that we wanna look at that, or do we just, are y'all good with kinda how the the?
What are some of the things you were thinking about?
Well, I mean, the, I was wanting to try to incorporate slippage, one way or another, like our employment slippage, how, somehow incorporate that into what our number looks like. You know, whether that's in the salaries and benefits number, or if it's in the contingency number or something like that, there's just a couple of places like that where I think we might be able to peel off two or 300,000 there, four, 500,000 there, to come to a number that's, that totals up, maybe to another eight or 10 cents on a tax rate for me. But, you know, frankly, I would tell you that, I mean, I I guess, I guess I'm having to list it now, but, I mean, you know, the tier three stuff for me, which would include something that you asked about unfortunately, but the tier three stuff, I, you know, I think we could probably, we could probably put that off and, and, you know, see. And we have some other things coming down the pipe here in the next year or two that are possibilities that that might make this budget look a little better. And so that's why I really don't wanna go out here on this high end, but.
What we have to talk about?
So the contingency, the slippage, the tier three, because I think tier three was another 890,000 or something like that, or something like that. But, you know, we start getting, that tier three is really kinda the only cut stuff. The other stuff are just more kinda budgeting, accounting, you know, stuff that we expect, what ha- something I don't think we'll expect to happen anyway.
Was, these figures, what what level of funding were these, this diagram that you gave us? Were you funding tier three in the, in those scenarios?
Uh, those had all tiers involved. See on the screen, screens right now, that, that worksheet, like I said, we can vary these parameters and and change our fund balance usage. So the red, the red box, again, you've seen this before, but the red boxes are financial policies. That's where we need to stay indefinitely, and what the policy suggests is that we should stay in the dark blue over a period of time. So right now, it's set with tier one, two, and three, right now that, okay, it's set tier one, two, and three, and it's set for solid waste fees at five, seven, nine, 11 over the next few years, in a 32 cent property tax increase, and that keeps us at the bottom of the of the line for the next two or three years. FY23, it suggests that we should, at that point in time, make a change, we go to 45 cent. That would put us in that top of that range, would keep us at, well within the sweet spot, so to speak, on our policy. And again, that's with one, two, and three. Can vary those, we can take out three, as Councilmember Lance had said, and and drop our number down to 42. So that's a three cent reduction on that. Obviously, increasing solid waste fee over, over a period of time is going to to raise that, you can see, you can do the first year at 12, and it it does increase it.
So.
To the top, and we can move that down somewhat. Yes, ma'am, sorry.
So you are saying we can kinda, kind of eliminate threes right now?
No, I was just showing the effect of it on here, that's, that's council's call, if if they wanna eliminate three, if you wanna eliminate all the threes, we wanna take a look through them. But we can, we can make the adjustments on here that that we need to keep us within the range and see how that, see how that works. Right now, at at 40 cents, if we funded everything at a 40 cent increase, let me put the property tax back, or the solid waste fee back, we stay within kind of the midpoint of the, of the area we wanna be in.
So the the sum of the tier three projects is the 904, that's what we're talking about? But that's the sum of all those tier threes, not just the staff priority?
Yeah, it was eight, it was, it was 890, and we had to add something on a computer, some computer things that we didn't, we didn't have before, so your number was right, but we had to add about $45,000 on there for training computers.
But the, you know.
I've removed it from there and we still stay within the line, so the nine, the 900,000 changes it, but it doesn't change it substantially over time.
I I I, let me, let me say this too, just, I mean, for staff out there and for the citizens that might be listening to this, I purposely, and I hate to say this, but I'm gonna be honest about this. I purposely, there's only one thing that I know is on that tier three list, and it's because it was brought up separately, I mean, you know, individually. I, you know, I'm kinda basing that off of, you know, you guys sort of put these things in these tiers, and in a year that we're 16, we're starting off at a minus 16, to me, it just is logical that we would maybe not fulfill all of those this year. And I felt like the tier three was enough for me, rather than going all the way up into tier one and start talking about not hiring more police officers, and I did, I did look at tier ones. But, you know, so just, just for, so y'all know, I just.
But your tier three has some long-term, I mean, you've got.
It's got maintenance things in it, it's got, uh.
Well, no, I'm I'm just saying that, you know, it, your, your tier three that you have, you know, a project manager, you have records and evidence techs. I mean, those tier three costs are not just gonna be this year, those tier three costs are gonna be ongoing when we bring those on.
Right, your, your, yeah, your sheet marks the ongoing and the costs that are ongoing, quite a few of it's ongoing. As a matter of fact, out of tier three, I mean, the ongoing costs of those are almost as, tier three, it's probably about, what, 70% of those are ongoing costs? 60, 70% of those are ongoing costs?
This may be a better way for me to have said this, and and I I was, I'm, I'm, I really was using your guys' rating of the tiers to to do, to do this. But frankly, what I'm trying to look at is, look at that supplement number.
Yep.
And get it cut by basically a third or so. You know, now, if you guys look through this stuff, if staff comes back and looks, you know, you guys look through this stuff and you say, well, man, this tier three thing actually may be more important than this tier two thing, fine. I don't, you know, I, so I, I, doesn't necessarily technically be the, the individual things on the list for me, I would trust staff to make that call. I'm just trying to figure out, where can some of these things get cut? It seemed logical to me that that might be one of the places.
Cut what now? I'm sorry, you said cut.
Just the, somewhere in those supplementals.
Well, let, let me give a.
Thousand or so out of supplementals.
Outside agents?
No, supplementals and all this stuff.
Oh, yeah, outside agencies on there, on there. Let me give a little context to that, because we're, it, I mean, if we're gonna take a broad brush to it, I think you should understand the entire process. So we asked them, uh, department heads to give us what they think that they really feel like they need for their supplement. We asked that in the context of expenses are gonna be over revenue, so don't ask for anything you don't need. So generally speaking, and there's always a range to any type of request like that, but generally speaking, they ask for things they need. We went through and cut already a million two out of that. So of the things that they were told, don't ask unless you really need it, a million two's gone away. And then we prioritized it, so the million, the the tier threes, I don't, I don't want a suggestion that the tier threes are something we don't feel like we need, or it it's those that were probably less.
I'm not suggesting that, what I'm saying is, we may have to do without some things that we need a little bit longer in the situation that we're in, it's just sort of my general feeling on it. It even, it's no fun, I don't love that, but it's kind of, the comment I made about my kids
Yep.
last week is, sometimes I.
No, I under- I understand, I just.
Things I would wanna do.
Didn't want it left unsaid by anyone listening, that we didn't, we haven't vetted this pretty closely before we even got here.
And I trust that that happened.
Craig, are there some things on here, and and I'm looking at item 45, marketing for parks and recreation, $22,930. Increase recreation, marketing and branding. Wouldn't that also have a positive return if you marketed your parks better and you had more tournaments and you had more advertising within the park system and, you know, maybe banners on the side of Rover buses, just marketing as a whole? If we do a better job of marketing, doesn't it have a revenue return side in addition to the expense side?
Yeah, it could, and and part of going through and and putting those into the tiered fashions that we did is that we did try and consider what revenue we had and what we could measure and and when it would come in. And so the marketing's actually switching marketing from one to another, I mean, Nate can obviously talk about this a lot better than I can, but shifting our marketing program into another marketing program. And so undoubtedly would have an increase, how we measure that, we don't know. We know we are working closely with Parks and Rec to develop something that we know will bring in quite a bit of revenue. And so, given that context, we thought we'd make Nate live another year before he amped up his marketing even more than he already is.
But if there's one thing I learned in small business is the fact that if you're marketing and you're not increasing revenue,
Right.
you're not marketing very well.
Right.
And and so, I mean, theoretically, if if this were marketed properly, there should be a gain by having that tier three item on our books. If 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 marketing is a true need, and 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 I think in our Parks and Rec system, it is a need, but.
Well, any any service we market, of course, we have to look at what fees we charge for it, and are we bringing in from the outside, or if we're just having people come in from the inside, or because if they're not paying fees, maybe they're staying at hotels, so it, you know, we we try and think through all the analysis and and make sure that we're creating as much revenue as we possibly can, or at least pending the marketing on something. There is a benefit to marketing to our own people who live here that may not know that, you know, Barfield has all that it has to offer. And so, and that's more of, I guess, a lifestyle type of marketing than it is a revenue generating type marketing.
So look, my intent wasn't to try to start lion-riding in this stuff, I'll, you know, just really trying to think a big picture, and if the council, I I was, how I was kinda trying to start the conversation was if the council doesn't really wanna go into that or to to really, you know, to do some of those kinds of things, I'm, I'm, you know, it's your, you know, that's what, that's what we're here for, so I'm good with it, whatever, but I.
I I'm a little uncomfortable with making decisions that department heads are superseding some of the process by saying, well, this is not as important. You know, I I'm not sure I have the capacity to understand that. If they have vetted the process through the city manager and come to the assumption that this, these are things that are necessary for us to function, or have intrinsic value, that they're gonna, I just, I'd hate to say that I have the capacity to mark something out or say that's not worthy, you know? I I don't know, I, some people might consider that a little micromanaging, you know, the process, and I I I feel a little, I mean, I feel a little uncomfortable doing that, so.
I I I think there are times definitely to do that, and we welcome council, obviously, looking at everything very closely and doing those. I I will tell you right now, whether we do tier one or, or, I'm sorry, whether we do tier three or not, it doesn't have a substantial effect on what our performance shows on the, on the tax rate. And if we, if we narrow things down very closely, then obviously it might, and and so it's there, it's a decision point that we wanna have, it's probably not one that's gonna change, every, every penny that we put on here is very important, and I wouldn't de-emphasize any of that. But at the end of the day, 900,000 isn't addressing our problem, quite frankly.
A penny on the tax rate is how much?
See, I'm sorry, say it again.
A penny on the tax rate is?
Well, it would depend on the value of the house.
Well, I mean, we can assume certain value, when we set the property tax at 40 cents or 32 cents, we had.
Right.
We we have said that value is X amount expense. 10 cents, if you, it's easier to do 10 cents maybe, I don't know, but.
Good, if you give me a second.
Okay.
You can run through that and tell you.
Well, I think, you know, look, the.
Let me go ahead?
Yeah.
So Craig, if we start talking solid waste, what's the real number that really gets us where we need to be with solid waste?
Um, Darren, hear it, any? Yeah, I think it's 13, 12, 13?
It's 14, 50.
14, 50.
I mean, if, I think if the council understands that's where we need to be as a council, you know, I'd make a suggestion that that's the rate we go at. I mean, we we've heard it from staff saying that's, that's the rate where we, we will be efficient and good service will be provided, so I think that's the rate we should be going with.
How many cans are there, Darren?
45,000.
While he's looking, a penny on a tax rate, based on the rates we have right now from the assessors, about 444,000.
I'm gonna try to bring this up, y'all, sorry.
While he's doing that, Councilor Shaka, 10 cents is about, on the average residential property, on a per monthly basis, about $4.30, 37 cents, $4.38.
Do we have roughly 44,000 residences, is that where we're at, single family homes with cans, is is that close?
We we just gotta, just give us an idea.
Forty, forty, 40,000 cans.
We don't have to exactly.
What is it?
40,000 cans.
All right.
That, but that's recovering costs at the present level of service, so isn't, so.
57,000 cans.
That's, yeah. 44 pickups, 57 cans.
Five times. So do we have 57,000 cans that we're collecting $5 a piece on right now, today?
Well, that, that, the the graph I've got up here, that, yes, we're we're doing, we're, we're roughly picking up, I think, 30, what, how many residential? 36,000?
Yes.
36,000 cans once a week. And then we've got about another 15,000 that are commercial that we're picking up twice a week, and that's why we're, we've proposed, we're proposing to double, at least double, maybe even triple the commercial rate, because it requires twice, twice a week pickup, and it's being done with a two-man operation, the rear loaders, which requires two operators. Residential, we use the side loader, one operator, commercial requires two people, and it's getting done twice a week.
So, so are are we oversimplifying by sa- saying 14 dollars and 50 cents? Should we be at 10 for residential and and?
Well, that's what the graph, you can see the under recovery, if we're at 5 and 15, I don't know if you can see this on your di- we're at a 43% recovery. So you can see, when I say we're at, if you look at that number between, you can see the $13 for residential, 39 for commercial, and 16 for residential, and at 48, we go from minus 11% under recovery to 12% over recovery, so that's where I'm saying that 13 to 16 dollar mark on the residential is about 14 and a half bucks. But we would need to be around $42 a a a month for the rep, for the commercial.
But that's out in the future, though, right?
Well, yes, that's true, so you could back that, I could find out what that number is.
Yeah, so whatever we'd be at now would be probably more like 10.
Right, we're growing, we're, yeah, it could be more like 12. If we wanted to go ahead, I mean, because that has got about a three and a half percent expense.
12 residential, how much commercial?
10 residential, I think he said.
Well, it needs to be at least 24, because we're doing, picking it up twice a week, I would, I would advocate three times whatever residential is. Or to, at least two, two and a half to three times what residential is.
15,000 commercial cans, is that right? 15,000-ish? Fifteen thousand commercial cans, is that right? Fifteen thousand-ish?
Yeah, I've got the table. I don't, I don't have the table with me right now.
This is gonna, it doesn't have to be exact anyway, actually, so. Five times fifteen thousand. That's times twelve.
I don't have the, I've got, I've got a table that breaks it down between what's in CUD's territory, what's in Murfreesboro Water territory and the difference between what I'm calling residential versus multifamily slash commercial. Because some of the multifamily, we do, we do have some apartments that we pick up twice a week as well.
What's the total, what's the total budget number for, for your area, for this, for waste?
Six point.
It's how much?
Six point four million. Are you saying for the annual expense? That includes, you know, capital expenses and new trucks as well.
I just did some quick math. Ten, ten and twenty, a ten and twenty dollar split would put us at about seven point eight. So, we're gonna be closer back here on this back number.
Yeah.
So if we do.
I can get you the better numbers. You're right. I mean, that's what we're talking about though. If we're around twelve dollars per cart for residential, it needs to be at least twenty-four, thirty dollars for the, for the commercial, just for the double pickup.
Yeah. Seven and eighteen.
Ten and twenty-five.
No, we're way over already. For commercial.
I think maybe.
Total at ten and twenty.
We're at fifteen now.
Just, this is just my opinion. I hate to hit, you know, going through this whole process with solid waste. And no, no one's been used to paying for the trash. And that's, it's never been paid for because it's, it's been in our, it's been in our, our property tax. And one of the reasons we pulled it out was to prepare for what's gonna happen in five years. So, I mean, I think, y'all have heard me say this, what you did with, you know, back many years ago where we were giving away free water, we had a minimum that, what was the gallons that we were giving away?
Yeah, we were giving a couple thousand gallons as, as under the minimum.
Yeah, so you didn't.
Monthly fee.
You know, you didn't have a water bill unless you spent over, so you took, it took five years to be able to reduce that down. Maybe the answer is to come up with a, as, as we're looking at this line that Craig's working on on our fund balance, maybe the answer is to come up with a five-year cost recovery to say.
That's what that is.
Yeah, so.
That's, that's what that is.
Yeah.
That orange line says we need about six and a half million dollars and at five and fifteen, we're gonna be just under three million dollars of recovery.
Yeah.
And that's where that red, so we don't go positive until, we don't, we don't over-recover until that year five. So to, so, you know, if we're at five and fifteen and we're forty-three percent recovering, so do the math. I mean, you just, it's the reciprocal of that, right? It's point, point five divided by point four three, is that right? Somebody help me out here. Eleven dollars and sixty-two cents. That would get us there, based on, that would get us a hundred percent recovery in two thousand twenty.
And that's off residential.
That was residential. And if you went fifteen divided by point four three, you're at thirty, thirty-four eighty-eight.
And if we went to commercial?
Thirty-four eighty-eight.
I mean, my opinion, the residential side, I think is, do that over five years. I have four cans at my commercial business and I get charged twenty bucks a month, which is super cheap to get trash picked up twice a week.
Right.
So, you know, I really don't think, from a commercial standpoint, the majority of commercial clients that we're picking up are all commercial clients that are, that are downtown or around that downtown area. There's some apartments down there that we've picked up and it may be the best thing for our commercial customers is to say, you need to find a way, we're gonna give you two years, we're gonna charge you, you know, thirty bucks a month or forty bucks a month, whatever that number is to pick your tra, trash up twice. But we're gonna give you two years to figure out how to get other services. And then, you know, that's the only rear loading trucks we have are the ones that we use to go pick up the commercial services, which means higher workers comp on the people who are having to pick up those cans.
Right.
So is it, can we look at figuring how to do?
We've, we've looked at commercial rates and when, what the, if we, quick and dirty numbers, if we charge forty-five dollars per cart per month, once you got over five carts, it would be better for you to go get a commercial vendor.
I mean, this is what's crazy. The building next to me has a dumpster that they pay an outside company to pick up. And I have four cans because that's the way it's all, always been done. I don't have room where I could put a dumpster.
Right.
But, I mean, that, that's some of the stuff that we're dealing with on the commercial side because, I forget what's the apartment complex that we have? A fence and we have a bank of twenty different cans that they have to go pull up to and physically load and unload those.
Brownstone or something out there by the college. It's got that.
I don't know what the, there we go. I don't know what that apartment complex is. Where's it at?
It doesn't matter.
We don't, we don't need to.
It doesn't matter, I know. But, but I, but I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at is we've looked at that breakover point and that magic number. Once we get to charging someone, if we do forty-five dollars per, per cart per month for commercial, right? So if you've got four carts, you're talking a hundred and eighty dollars a month. Once you go over five, based on the commercial rates that we went out and looked at Waste Management in Republic, based on the volume, right? Four carts is only like one, two, two cubic yards of, of space. You can go get a two cubic yard dumpster for, for right around that two hundred dollar number. So once you go over that, that, so that's where we were kind of getting at, is if you had over five carts, you need to go get a dumpster. And we need to charge a rate that disincentivizes continuing to use these.
I mean, in my, my opinion, I would rather see, we really, we don't pick up track, or commercial trash anywhere across the city except for the ones that have been grandfathered in. We would be better off getting that to more, a comparable rate to what you would pay through the, the private sector and not hit a, see what that increase is.
Right.
And then also look at that five-year recovery with, with homeowners. I just hate to hit homeowners and all of a sudden say, hey, you're going, reenacted it in January of this year.
I hate it too. But, but, you know, my whole purpose of this is to reduce the property tax number by that amount. So it's a net, I mean, it's the same thing for me, it's just a different way that it's structured.
But, but the key too is this, we can't just keep kicking the can down the road.
I agree.
We have to do something and we have to make solid decisions, what's best. I mean, I'm not saying you're not saying that, I'm just saying.
I would rather us vote on and say, look, we're gonna vote on a five-year rate structure like we did with the, with the water and say, here's where it's going five year, every year for the next five years, here's what the rate's going to. And we don't even have to discuss it. We know next year, two thousand nineteen or two thousand twenty, twenty-one, that rate's seven fifty. We don't even have to discuss it. There's what the rate's gonna be.
And that's, and that's what we've, that's, I heard you and that's kind of what I did on this graph, the five, seven, ten, thirteen, sixteen, over a five. That would be the five-year residential rate design. Would go five, seven, ten, thirteen to sixteen. And the, and the commercial or multifamily would be fifteen, twenty-one, thirty, thirty-nine, forty-eight.
So is anything changing in service in that year? I mean, other than updating trucks and all, because it looks like the revenue, is it, what, about eight million? At, at the end of this five?
Right. Yeah, once we get past, I mean, twenty twenty-four, well, we're talking about bringing on a transfer station.
Okay, that, that's a part of this plan.
That's part of this plan and we do, we are adding a driver and a truck every other year based on the growth.
Am I mad?
Single transfer station, one?
Well, right now, that's the plan, yes. I mean, there, there.
Eight million dollars, there's one transfer.
Four million, yes. The debt service on four million, right, yes, there's one transfer station. We're, we're looking at a location. And that's, again, work, we're trying to work with the county and if they can develop a transfer station and if we can do a joint operation, then. I'm trying to give you worst-case scenario. The more we can collaborate with the county and the longer the landfill stays open, the better our scenario is.
So if we go to, if we go to seven fifty and twenty dollars, if we do seven fifty residential, which would, which would be an increase, but not a big increase, and go to twenty dollars, we get to full recovery. The total budget gets covered with those numbers.
I can't, I need to go look.
It's close.
Okay.
It's real close. I mean, you know, and again, this is all, what I'm trying to do is back into what the, the effect on the property tax number would be.
What does that do? What does it pull out of it?
About another eight or nine cents. Because it's an extra three and a half million bucks.
Can you plug that in and see what that comes up to, Craig?
Seven fifty next year?
Seven, if.
This year.
This budget.
I really want to get back and look at those numbers though. I'm not confident.
Yeah, but see, Craig's power, Craig's PowerPoint's better than yours.
Between that and Rick's, and Rick's calculator, we're in good shape.
I'm just looking at, I'm just looking at my, you know, again, forty, five and fifteen, we're looking at forty-three percent recovery. And that's where I divided the five and the fifteen by point four three. That gives me that six point four million to, to recovery. So again, five divided by point four three, that gets us to eleven sixty-two. And the fifteen divided by point four three gets us up to thirty-five. So your numbers are pretty drastically different than just taking the reciprocal of these and getting it to the full recovery.
If the thirty-five thousand number is correct and the fifteen thousand number is correct, it's pretty simple math.
I don't think the fifteen thousand's correct.
I think that fifteen thousand is actually only like thirty.
I think we're more around, I think the more conservative number's around forty thousand cans altogether. I need to go back and double check. I apologize for not having that in front of you right now. I need to go back and look at that. I had a memo and I've got, and I've got a table somewhere. I just don't have it on my flash drive.
Can you come back to us and tell us?
I can come back in thirty minutes and I'll have it to you.
So, so let me make sure and if we think through this, in either case, if we go seven fifty and twenty, it's an extra three and a half million dollars on top of what we're recovering right now.
Right.
Is that, no, it's not either. No, it's not. Not if those numbers aren't right.
Because you just said it had to be eleven sixty-two, so.
Yeah, I'm gonna, let me, let me just go get that table. You got, if we can talk about something else, let me just go get those numbers and I'll, I'll bring it back.
You're gonna have Michael, that's gonna, Michael's, Michael's gonna come out of the TV room here, here at about six fifty and he's gonna be like my wife when it's time to go to bed. She's, he's gonna shut it down, so.
Maybe it's, I mean, you know, maybe.
Yeah, that's okay. I'm not gonna say, I'll, I'll go get those numbers. Let me go get that table real quick.
I think, I think it would be fair to say that it's somewhere between five and eight cents of an impact. You know, that's, maybe that's as close as we need it for right now for decisioning purposes. You know, maybe it's not, but I.
So, seven fifty, this calculates seven fifty and twenty-two, it would be three times twenty-two fifty on solid, on commercial solid waste pickup. So, at that number, that's plugged in. And so you, you'd see the line there, right? Let's see, thirty-three cents is the tax rate that's plugged into the, into the formula. That keeps you in the blue, keeps you on the lower end of that blue. We can vary it, oops.
What is the rate that's plugged in? What's the rate that's plugged in in that formula?
So Craig, again, what have you got plugged in for residential and commercial?
Residential and commercial.
Solid.
Solid waste. Right now it's seven fifty, next year, starting, next year, seven fifty. So solid waste would be three times that, twenty-two fifty.
So what if you did this year? I think it's what Rick was asking, what if you, you made that effective this year, if you did seven fifty this year for this upcoming budget?
Right, this upcoming, yeah, that's what I did, seven fifty for this.
I can't, I can't see up that far.
Yeah, seven fifty for this upcoming budget. That's plugged in there.
And you've still got tier three in that too?
So I guess the question is, you know, we're, we're, council's comfortable for that, that projection to be thirty-two cents, we stay in the blue. We stay comfortably in the blue for several years. Equalization is when we always should be talking about tax rate. And we went to three, we're still down at.
Craig, I think your solid waste tab has the number of customers broken out by residential and commercial.
It does. I think that's, so solid, it shows customers for residential, thirty-five, seven. Shows about four thousand cans for commercial. Darren's gonna get the actual numbers.
He was saying forty thousand.
He was using fifteen.
Yeah, that's what I thought it was, thirty-eight.
Thirty-nine, seven.
It's not.
About forty thousand cans.
I, I know we've got several different views on the tax and the trash piece, and I said this last week. But, you know, one of the, one of the hard things about this discussion, I think, is the, the sudden nature of the fact that we need a forty cent tax increase to, property tax increase to fix the budget. So, you know, in the average person's mind that doesn't spend as much time as we're spending, that sounds like a really big number and it is a really big number. I think we have some idea about how we got there. We have better information. Craig, that's your fault, you know? And so, it, it's good that we know what we're dealing with, but I think there's also some assumptions in this that, you know, we're not thinking about. If you, you look at the, the revenue that we've generated from property sales tax and how much that has supplemented the budget, you know, over the past ten years, what if, right? So what if we go back to the loss in revenue we had in two thousand nine and two thousand ten and what does that do to the budget? And as we're talking about budget line items like solid waste, which we can quantify and identify today, we know exactly how we can deal with that, at least today, while we can't predict, you know, what growth will do, what, what sales tax revenue will do. And the other side of this, and I'm kind of talking in circles, but, you know, what did we invest in the avenue to create that additional revenue opportunity and what are we not budgeting for moving forward? To create some of the same revenue that has been what has allowed people to have very low property taxes. So, you know, I mean, I'm a banker. I spend a lot of time looking at financial statements and, and what I know is, while people do not want to pay more in property taxes, very few people would give up the gains that they've had in their real estate portfolios over the past twenty years. Even if the rate were set at what it was in nineteen eighty-nine, which was over two dollars per assessed, hundred dollars in value as we're doing that. So, you know, I, I think that's a fair argument. I think the investments that this council and other councils have made and, and leaders in our city that have really sort of planned the growth of our community and really tried to do as well as they could to look into the future about what it could be, you know, there've been a lot of taxes that haven't been paid for the growth that we've had. And so, you know, I think it's, I think it's important to be conscientious from an expense standpoint. I haven't seen anything in what has been produced that's made me think that we're doing otherwise. But it's also unrealistic to think that you're gonna live in a community that has grown the way ours has grown and hopefully will continue to grow, which will produce additional revenues, without continuing to make investments in that community. So, I would be for full recovery on trash because, you know, for that person that's only casually paying attention to this, if we do raise property taxes, whether it's ten cents or forty cents, and we charge two dollars more in trash a year from now and two dollars more in trash a year from now, people aren't gonna be happy with that. And it's gonna be us reaching into their pocket and grabbing more, more tax dollars. So, I would be for us fixing the problem today and us being accountable for not being in the same situation again a year from now. Because I feel like if we underfund what we're talking about, we're gonna be having this conversation a year from now. And people aren't gonna be happy, they're gonna be less happy than they are now. Just my two cents.
I'll go with whatever y'all want. I'm fine, I'm fine either way.
Just got an email from Darren.
Yeah, it's, it's thirty-six thousand residential, four thousand commercial. The two thou, so the four thousand get picked up twice a month and the thirty-six thou, I mean, twice a week, the thirty-six thousand get picks, gets picked up once a week. Your spreadsheet was better, yes. That was just me, that was me panicking on the numbers in front of y'all. I'm sorry.
All right.
Is, is there enough support on the council to go with a, a recommendation that if we have full recovery on the trash and see what the tax number would look like on the property tax piece?
Like real quick. Let, let's see what they need to get to so we can kind of, you know, kind of make a judgment on that.
Point five three for forty-two. It's gonna be the four thousand number I did while we go. Yes, but commercial would have to be charged, I mean, if we did across the board forty thousand. Are you talking about not doing anything special with the twice a week pickup?
We are talking about that.
You are talking about that.
Hey, since the mayor left and he's got commercial rates, can we go three times? Three times at commercial rates?
I get it. I get it.
And we say that's your idea?
Hey, Darren, is, is three times the number, is that the appropriate number, or is it two and a half, or is it three and a half?
Well, I haven't gotten down to that granular of a level detail. I went three times because, one, it should be double, we know, because it's twi- it's been picked up twice as much. You have an extra man, and it's a less efficient operation to pick it up. So, I'm gonna say it needs to be a minimum of two and a half, so I just rounded that up to three. Especially in this first year, if we were just looking at going at five and fifteen. What I've got in front of you here, uh, is the table, it's the breakdown, um, I'm gonna go down to this other table. This is where I was alluding to earlier, that if you look at, if we go to that forty, uh, eight dollar per month per cart for commercial, you can see at four carts, we would charge one ninety-two, the Republican Waste Management would, would charge two hundred and thirty-eight for that same volume. At eight carts, we would charge three hundred and eighty-four, where Waste Management would charge two seventy-seven. So, that's where I'm saying, once you go over five, it is of econo- it is, it is, it is a better deal to go solicit a private vendor. And really, we shouldn't be having more than four or five carts at a commercial business anyway, in my opinion. Uh, it's just inefficients, it's inefficient based on the level of garbage that they're generating, the fact that we have to have the two-man operations, we do not want that fleet to grow, we do not want to add more people. They're on the back of, if you've seen them, they're on the back of those, uh, vehicles, and it's an unsafe, uh, the workers' comp risk liability, I don't, I'm not, that's not my forte, but I'm gonna just tell you, you're, you're increasing the, the opportunities for injury. So, that's where, um, I'm saying that we wanna get to ultimately a forty-eight dollars per month per cart for the, for the commercial. So, to answer your question, yes, two and a half, three times is, uh.
So, somewhere in that neighborhood, if we.
Yes, it does, it definitely justifies it.
If we went something akin to twelve and thirty.
Right.
Okay.
That's exact, yes.
That's, if twelve and thirty would get us to six-point-six.
Right.
Which is, puts us right on top of that.
Right on top, yep.
That you're there, okay? So, so what, what I would say is, if we wanna make a decision, we don't necessarily, I don't think, have to decide that it's exactly twelve and thirty, you know, let you guys do a little bit more, but the idea of full recovery means we're gonna need to get to six-point-four, which is four million more than where we're at currently today.
Correct.
Exactly.
Yes.
Alright, which is ten cents.
Based on your saying on the property tax, it's equivalent to ten cents on the property tax.
Ten cents on our property tax number. So, so really, we could still let you guys do some work on the number, but to give us a general idea of where that would come in, it's gonna be somewhere in the eleven and thirty-three, if you wanna do it three times. It's gonna be somewhere in the twelve to thirty, if you wanna do it two, two and a half times. You, you with me on that?
Yes.
Sorry, I, so, so in either case, that's a ten-cent number to us as it relates to the property tax, if we go to full recovery on trash.
So, if we.
But, the, you know, the impact is on residents, it's going five to twelve, but it's still a net number if we back, if, if everybody else is willing to back off ten cents of what their num- you know, I don't know what everybody's number is, nobody knows what anybody's number is at this point, but if you're willing to back ten cents off that number, it's a net neutral. What I wouldn't, you know, what I wouldn't wanna do is, and this is where the chicken and the egg, maybe part of this conversation comes in, is both, right? I mean, you know, I got kinda my number in my mind that I'm trying to get to, and.
I think that was the reason for sca- for staging it in over a finite period of time to make that palatable. But, but, but either way, it's, like you say, it's a revenue.
If you back it off, it's that, it's net neutral to the, to the citizens.
So, and, and if the tax, property and then solid waste, so you're talking about, uh, take care of all three tiers?
Alright, so.
Get three tiers?
Why don't we just get to a number, why don't, cause we're about to run out of time, why don't we just get to a property tax number, a tax rate number where everybody's comfortable? And then we can decide to back off ten cents for full recovery later, or later tonight, later in the week, whatever, next week, however you wanna do it.
But, I was just saying, is, are we basing this, what we're trying to get to, to take care of the tiers, the three tiers you're talking about? No, I know we're talking about property taxes, but I'm saying, when we get that number, is that taken into consideration, all of the tiers, all three tiers?
Well, where do y'all wanna be?
Cause you know, Rick, and it's rightfully so, some of these things can be eliminated.
Talk where we're at with solid waste, so so, what you see in front of you is, is, uh, thirty-five cents, twelve dollars recovery, and that would be three times for, the formula's three times for, so it'd be thirty-six on the commercial. That would put you in the blue, now, you know, rejection would be, you'd be using fund balance for a couple of years down the line, and probably pretty close to balancing out in the future years. That's at thirty-five cents. Twelve dollar, twelve dollar solid waste fee, thirty-five cent increase in property tax, all three tiers. You know, frankly, we could, if we took the tier off, it changed, it's a marginal change. And it's a marginal change a couple of years down the line.
And if it's a marginal change, guys, I, I'm, I'm kinda siding with Bill on this one, because you're getting off into micromanaging what department heads feel like they need, and, and it, uh, I, I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit slow to start kicking things out when the police department say they need additional officers to manage their, evidence and stuff.
Nobody's brought that up. For the record.
When we're looking at the budget, I still wanna consider the little man in all of this. We have a growing population of the little man, that are living from check to check, you know? They don't even go on the side of the, uh, town where the night subdivisions are. And if they need to use that rover on Saturday, they're missing a day's work, say, get an Uber or a Lyft, they can't afford it. I still want us to consider the little man with that rover.
Could you change that thirty-five to thirty, is that what? So, at the point that we have another reassessment and equalization, which is where we're talking now, a new profile or a new protocol that looks at that differently, we're basically needing to do something at that point anyway, aren't we? Aren't we talking about so that we don't face the same kind of?
Well, I, I, I think property tax should be part of every budget discussion, I think every four years, an equalization, it definitely should. I mean, equalization serves a purpose, to me, the primary purpose is to take another hard look at it. Where I came from, we had rolling assessments, it was every year it was different. And so, um, but the equalization, whether you agree with it or not, should engender a conversation, definitely, about what your tax rate should be.
But, for the four, next four years, we stay in the blue line, is that what I'm seeing, that, that's what I'm seeing with that?
Yeah, if you look down on the fund balance increases or decrease, uh, at thirty, you are, you are dipping into fund balance, we'll add to it next year, um, then the next few years, we will continue to dip into it, but it does stay within policy, uh, on the upper end of the range. So, and, and, you know, I will say generally, we try hard during the year on our expenses to, to, to moderate those, so generally, you know, what you're seeing is a conservative estimate here on what, what things should look like, and hopefully we come in a little bit better, so, if we're a little bit, you know, a couple hundred thousand into the negative, we're probably gonna end up alright. Darren does her job. No pressure.
Craig, if, if we, if we keep the tier three, the one thing, uh, we've talked about rover service on Saturdays for years, and we've talked about trying to get it out to Joby Jackson Parkway. We really need to monitor, maybe make it a pilot program for Saturdays to see what the ridership is. You know, and if we're, if we're running five routes, or, or whatever the total is, and we've got ten people who are using it, then what I would hate to do is, is we put the expectation out there that we're gonna offer that service, and once you put that service out there, if it's not successful, it's impossible, it, it's really hard to pull it back.
Right.
So, I mean, if we, if we offer the service and people don't take advantage of it, then that at least lets us say, we're gonna see how it works.
Yeah, and I.
I'm good with that.
I think that, in, Erno Kraken, if I'm wrong, I think what we've projected in here is a pilot program, three routes,
Alright.
with the federal subsidization, the important part of that is, there's uncertainty, I don't know if it's growing uncertainty, I don't know. Russ is here, growing uncertainty on the federal subsidization, subsidization of that program. And if that goes away, then obviously we're bearing the full cost of it, which is, um, what, eighty percent more than what we have budgeted, so.
But, I mean, if, if, if that subsidy went away, that's where I would hope.
We'd have to re-figure.
Y'all would come to us and say,
Yeah, that's.
Hey, it's not fifty thousand dollars, it's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that would be a, a real big change, yeah.
What is, a pilot program for, what's the term of that pilot program, is it, are you considering it?
Next budget year, right?
A year?
Yeah, we would do it the next budget year, and then do an assessment next budget.
Okay.
Well, and I think it's important, if you're, if you're gonna do that, if you lose the subsidy, it's nice to know where you're needed most. And so, if you don't do that, activity on Saturday or those pilot programs, you will not know at that particular point in time, it's a much harder ask to do, if the subsidy's gone, versus if you have the data on what is working in that period of time.
That's a good point.
If you don't think, think out of the box and increase the chances of succeeding on Saturday, you might wanna consider beer sales on rover, and, uh, you're, you're gonna get beer tax revenue, and you're gonna have increased ridership, probably, so.
Sponsorship can generate a lot of money.
It'd get your tour, your tour bus can help.
Wait for that, let's.
Budweiser bus.
Alright, um, I wanna make sure that the council's on board, so this is not just my proposal that I'm, that I'm, I'm doing. Do you, do y'all want to get the solid waste number to come back, find out exactly what that number is, and then equate that back to where that puts us?
To a reduction on property.
On the property tax, and then next week, we can discuss where that puts us. Is, is that?
That's correct.
Okay. Is that? Okay, and then between now and next week, if you wanna talk to, to Craig about the tier three, and maybe come up with what could be saved, talk to Craig between now and then. Does that sound good?
Sounds good.
Alright, departments, thank y'all so much for working, um, through this. And Michael, we now have thirteen minutes, twelve minutes and a half to spare instead of the ten you asked for, so, we'll stand adjourned.
Alright.